There's. So we'll call the meeting to order at 7:07. There's agenda, director's report, financial report, if anybody needs copies. I didn't take copies of all other reports. Okay, so let's start off with Dr. Mugenda. Anybody else need copies? Okay.
I'm just passing around what I do that. Anyone else want the director's report or the financial report?
I read, I read.
Memorize it. Okay, so first order business adoption of the agenda. Second, okay, on favor, opposed, okay, motion carries. Next, approval of the July board meeting minutes. Any comments, corrections, edits to the minutes?
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you very much. Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the minutes? Okay, Rebecca, is there a second? Okay, Noah, seconds and on favor. I, okay, carries. All righty. Next, the planning calendar. So a couple of things to highlight, or things that are coming up on the planning calendar. So this weekend, we have the Magicians Without Borders event happening at 11:00 AM on Saturday. If anybody needs flyers or handout, there's some extra ones from the car show.
The only change is that unfortunately, the person, the people who are going to do music are, have a family emergency and they're, or a medical emergency and they're not going to be able to do it. So it's just the magic right now. It's not, it should be good now.
Um.
Possibly. I'll ask them.
We have also in August, we have on the calendar, the summer camp weekly and preparation of the, I guess that would be the 202. Budget and I know your report, Rebecca, mentioned that we'll be watching next month.
So we are going to do the summer camp weekly Monday.
Okay.
I'm not sure. If anybody, I'm still trying to.
I'm good for either.
We have the Monday logo meeting.
Yes, right, that's why we were.
Okay, so. And then, um, the, um, that's not actually, when does that actually do the budget part? Is that just something?
The budget for next year.
Yeah. In September, is there actual dates before the town board meeting?
There used to be a, when does the town do their budget?
They start in September.
So usually by November.
Okay.
And what I will do once this starts, I can't give my.
Uh, so that's all I have left happening, August. In September, some things to be thinking of, start planning the annual appeal. There is also, there was a third round of grants from the, uh, that long video. Metal, yeah, well LTC, I can't remember. Library, library communities.
Oh, yeah.
That we got the previous grant from, they have another round open. If we were to apply for that for anything, the deadline is September 16th. So Sarah and I have been talking about it a little bit, might be a little early to sort of jump on something else. But it could be interesting to be able to secure something that would be more library focused this time.
Could you apply for, I didn't realize that was, I saw the email and I thought that it was just.
No, they're encouraging people to.
It'd be great if we were having the first conversation before that, so that something, something could be followed after us, like the follow-ups that we could actually use the grant money for, but.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I mean, we could probably try and do something programming wise, like I come up with something that we could use it for for programming, so I'll look for a little bit more.
Okay. Do you want to look at that?
When did you say it's due?
Sixteenth of September.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's coming right. Um, okay, so in that mid-September range is when we're trying to have the first meeting with the organizations regarding the survey. That'll be coming up. We also have in September, Halloween party planning, which we talked about later, and strategic and budget planning. So just some things to start to put on our radar and schedules for September. And then in October, big thing of understanding Halloween party, we also have the end of our survey grant, so we'll have to have our. And, uh, kind of discussion. One other thing I wanted to mention looking ahead, so, um, the fire department, I'm not sure if it's officially the fire department, but, um, a couple of people from there are looking into trying to do a holiday parade in conjunction with the tree lighting, which I believe would be on the 27th this year, it's kind of early. It's also Small Business Saturday. I think that the fire department did very well with the vendors at the car show. And I would have a sneaking suspicion they might want to try to do, maybe have vendors in the fire hall after the parade and the street lighting, and then they bring people back to have cookies and hot chocolate, whatever. I don't know about it all, no one said that, but, um, I had mentioned to Kim, just in terms of as we think about our holiday activities and, you know, thinking about if we want, we're thinking, thinking about trying to do a holiday market again, all of that, just to put that out there. So, well, I'll keep an ear out for what's available, but, um, but people seem.
How much do they charge for two or?
Ten.
Ten? We charge to call.
So. Does anyone have anything else on the planning calendar to bring up or to add? Halloween party is on the 30th.
You want me to talk about that now?
No, you can wait till you think. Okay, oh, oh, I do have one other thing related to this. I shouldn't have to. Um, so the, at the town board meeting the other night, uh, the veterans are preparing their Veterans Day plans. And they said the program seems geared to women in the military. They have not decided whether this is going to be on the 6th or the 13th, but, um, given that theme, I thought we might have some ideas of things that we could do to support that. So add that to the. And I don't know if they'll be doing their usual meetings here or what there, they apparently have been meeting outside. There's been some, um, discussion about whether they're going to be meeting at the fire hall or the town hall.
Okay.
And for their general meetings. Okay. Shall we move on to the.
Um, okay, so we've been busy. The programs that we had have gone pretty really well, actually. We have a solid group of teenagers doing Dungeons and Dragons. We had today, Mahjong had seven people, I think, and that was a good number. The live at the library is going really well as well, it's, um, except for, you know, when we've had to cancel because of power outages and, um, you know, rain. Scott Connors actually just, it was fun because there was one child, one teen, 41 adults and seven dogs. So it was like, it was a great crowd and unfortunately, we had to cancel Christina last week because of the rain, so. Our stuffed animal storytime went out really well, the kids had a good time with that. The half a kitchen or half Asian kitchen was also really good, and so was Birds of Prey, that had a great turnout. John Wall is going to start doing yoga again in the building. I don't know when, but he said he's very amped up and start people looking to do it again, so he'll be letting me know what time. But it'll be turn, a time when the library is closed, so it doesn't really affect the functioning of the building.
I just wanted to mention, I've heard several people mention how much they like the Birds of Prey program. And it was all adults, you know?
Oh, good.
Yeah, so people really thought that was great.
Yeah, yeah.
It kind of shows people love.
Yeah, exactly. They, um, Brian was, he's, his dad was here two years ago and then we booked them again last year, but obviously that didn't happen. So he was great to do this year again, and I will definitely bring him back. I actually had someone email me to say, I missed it. Are you going to bring him back? Like, well, it's a little expensive to bring back more than once a year, but we can definitely try, so, um, yeah, he's fantastic. Oh, please don't let me forget, I had this check in my office and I completely forgot to have Melon sign it. Can you sign me one for the red before we leave tonight? Um, well, it's good to hear. Our circulation is pretty much the same as it was. It went down a tiny bit in July from June, but a lot of people are going on vacation and, so you can see all my little statistics there. Same thing with the number of people in the building. It's obviously fluctuating a little bit. We have not had anybody who's wanted to do any of the curbside anymore. That's pretty much done and no one called, obviously they don't have to call for an appointment, but we don't have any of that. And I wanted to show you the, um, our patrons with registered cards. So we have patrons who have, um, cards that have expired and we have patrons who have cards that are still active technically. So this is my, my little graph to show you how many we have. We have just over, um, 800 or around 900 adult, excuse me, that's from one July, we have just over 600 people who, adults who are, um, still registered and using the cards. So that's, it's a pretty good number and that jump that you see is because of that one time when they wiped all the expired cards, I told you all about, or didn't wipe them, but they deactivated or whatever, so, um, pretty good. Collection development.
Idea of doing the mailing to folks to let them know, hey, you're expired, but just step in and we'll get it going and we'll be open and available.
I have to pull those lists and see if I can get them well enough. Okay, we have 17,127 items in our collection. Eighteen of those, 18 items were withdrawn this month, and then you can see how much I, um, was able to do. So I wrote in my report about summer camp, and I'll let Rebecca go over all of that. I did not attend this month's DA meeting. You see, the community room has been cleaned out. We got rid of all the books. Thank you to my boys because they did all the work.
A big thank you.
Yeah, they're gonna have.
Very nice.
It started, yeah, yeah. We did meet with the building committee, but I'll let, again, go over that. Summer reading is going to end on Saturday with our magic show, so that'll be the time we can get their tickets and then they're going to put in for the raffle drawings. The only thing that's not out on the shelf right now is, um, the two Kindles that we have, but those won't go out on the shelf. And I'm planning on having it so that the kids will come in up the stairs. Actually, we have new stairs. I don't know if anyone noticed, but their stairs are over here, so they'll come up the stairs after the magic show, give me their, or their stuff, get their tickets, come in here, do their tickets, and then they can either go that way or that way. That way we can just have one flow of people coming in and we'll try and space everybody out. That way they're not all in here at once. Um, so after a lot of more back and forth between the Berlin School District, when it comes to the story walk that was over on across the street, I decided, it turned out to be ridiculously difficult and it turned out to be a huge problem. So I just decided we're just going to cut ties and I will find another place for the story walk. It just ended up being, um, a problem. They wanted to put the posts and buckets and then take them down in July or only let them be up for July and August because, so it was just. And yeah, so that was a problem. Um, and the biggest news from our last week was the electricity, so the building stopped working. It was a huge, it was a little scary at first because we weren't sure if it was from water that was affecting the electricity because the, the water pump stopped working and then all of a sudden the lights started flickering. We were just like, oh, and then someone's outside and they say, oh my gosh, I can smell fire. I was like, ah, shoot. So we evacuated the building, we figured out that it was not, we called them plumbers, we called them the electricians. The problem was with the line going between the meter box and the utility pole. It looks, according to, um, Mike Colleen, who's the electrician who did the work, uh, it looks as if when they, when NISAG replaced those poles, they damaged the line underneath the ground. And it must have just taken enough time for it to corrode away, that suddenly it stopped working. So I, that was a big cost for us. That cost us about $1,300, I think. And I have claimed, or filed a claim with NISAG. Problem is, is that apparently it takes 30 to 45 business days for them to actually get back to us. So I'm just keeping my eye out, we'll try and make sure that they get that, and Mike said that he could, you know, write in whatever he needs to write in, but he wrote it in his, in his invoice, what happened, so we can hopefully have enough proof and documentation that they can reimburse us. That was not cool. It was a tough one. Just so everyone's aware, I am in touch with a couple of different people about the military history series. So I'm waiting for people to call me back. I've contacted someone about doing a Revolutionary War reenactment. We have someone who is going to be doing, she's not necessarily military history, but different types of history, and she teaches at Ollie and she sounds fantastic. And Greg, who did the last one, the last, uh, he's going to, he said he'll do it again too, so we'll start something up with him as well. Um, I'm still looking to contact the Corkscreer rail trails, see if we can get them in here, so, you know, we're trying to, but. We're going to have to decide, do we have programs inside as the weather starts to get colder, so, and, you know, it's going to depend on where, you know, where the numbers are, I'm sure, but. That way, it went well. It was actually a really lovely presentation. The guy who did it was fantastic. We had two kids and four adults, so, I mean, it wasn't as, as much as I had hoped, but, you know, it was definitely. He was fantastic and he only works for the USS later. That's, he's a volunteer, actually. They don't even charge people, but they ask you to give a donation, so we gave them a $75 donation, it's close to it. But he just does it because he loves it and he's very interested in the boat and, or probably can't call it a boat, ship. But he said there are some other, uh, presentations that he can give, like we did the history of it and the restoration, but there's some other topics that we can do, so we'll probably bring him back again. Because he was very happy to be here. And then, yeah, so it's just trying to, I'm not gonna, I don't want to kill ourselves trying to come up with lots of programming that's inside, if we can't have it inside. And so I'm just kind of, you know, dipping my feet in, you know, seeing how we can make it work. For now, though, everything's still outside, so.
What are you guys seeing right now for patrons coming in, in terms of who's wearing, people wearing masks?
It's like half and half. I would say it's definitely half and half. It's not, you know, most people who are just coming in to do stuff, it's probably half and half. Like our Mahjong ladies, no one was wearing masks then, but they were all together, they've been together for a while now, so they all are vaccinated. I don't know if we're going to want, you know, it's like I've been watching the numbers in Rensselaer County at least. All of the virus is happening on the other side of the mountain, you know, so it's like it has not quite crested this side of the mountain. I think we had a couple in Berlin, a couple in Petersburg, but nothing in Steventown. Three in Steventown, so, you know, it's kind of like, well, do we want to re-implement mask policy? I don't know, but a couple other.
People aren't getting tested because they are vaccinated, so if they, you know, just slightly, probably, I don't know, if people get tested and so you really don't know how prevalent it is.
Right, exactly, that's the other thing, so I don't know if we want to. Put mask policy back in place, and most places around here are not doing that. There are some libraries that are doing that, but that's, you know, back again, I know Host and Kill in Brunswick are the only two, and Voorheesville are the only ones that I know of that are doing it again. I don't know if East Green Bush has started back up again or not. So, um, and the tents had dried out. They were dry and it went, I bought, um, those green rugs to put underneath the tent, like fake grass, and that actually worked out really well, so they're still out there and hopefully it'll dry out enough for the presentation on, on Saturday. Because I don't know what we'll do if it doesn't. And then live at the library will be here tomorrow and we're going to continue doing that, though, on the parking lot, so that just works really well. That was a nice space. If we have to, we'll do the parking lot again for the magic show, but it also is supposed to rain, so I'm keeping my fingers crossed, if everyone else could keep their fingers crossed, but it's not going to do that anymore. That would be really good. And I have pictures on here for you guys, just to see what some of the things were happening, so it was a lot of fun. No, and actually that's something we need to roll out a little bit more, is put out, and it's actually working really, really well compared to what the old one was. The thing that some, no, actually it won't even come up on ours. Kapira is the new company that's using for the, for the app, and it gives you the opportunity to let your patrons check their own books out, um, on their phone. I didn't enable that. I decided that that was not something we wanted to do at all. I, I don't think it's as nice when you have, everyone's just doing it themselves. Why, it, it takes away from the experience of being a library, in my view, so. If you want to. And just so you know, those, if you want them, they're all yours. You're welcome. Yeah, the Kapira or the new HUHLS, I think it works great, so, yeah. So it's definitely something you need to advertise, because I have to remind myself, so.
Yeah, I did one on these, what, some, a weird abstract, which is a share.
Yeah. I'll put it up on my website too. Oh, and Noah and I met about our website as well, that was one thing I forgot on my stuff here, and we are trying to figure out best way to go about redoing the website. I'd had no clue that when you search on Google for the Steventown Library, it doesn't come up. The Facebook page comes up, but our website does not come up because of technical things that I have no clue about, so goodness forbid, Noah. He's going to help, we're talking with Rob from Upper Hudson, and we're going to figure out the best way to go about redoing the website, even though it's already had. It's, it's going to be good, I think that Noah is going to be able to find a lot of stuff that we can do to keep it. He was, you were telling me about all the different things, but it needs like tags and ways to get stuff that I don't understand. So that was the other thing that's happened this week, this month too.
Yeah, that would be great, I mean, not just completely, but for it to be a little bit easier, easier for updating, easier for, you know, all that.
Yeah, I mean, the competition, I know that it's, it's been a mix-up with Rob, that's why we have this big, you know, actual meeting.
Right.
I was telling him how, in a certain point, we can maybe like schedule, our main concern was that, you know, sometimes you start dealing with the website, something goes wrong and then the website goes offline for a couple of hours until you can get everything back up. So, uh, I think in the email, I'm not sure if you remember, I, I think we might be able to come up with a system in which we let the patrons know. You know, uh, the website will be ongoing maintenance for a couple of hours, just in case anything happens, whatever. So that's a thing that should happen, just because of the fact that the website is based off of WordPress, which is a content management system, we're just changing themes. I don't think that you generally measure.
Great. So he had said in the email that the sandbox was not as secure. If we do a sandbox, do you think that that's a big deal, that it should be, or?
The problem with the sandbox, and I understand what, what his perspective on it, is because the sandbox is essentially like a backdoor into the website. So. That would allow, I mean, I don't think that number is really.
Oh, don't say that, do you know what, did you hear that we did get hacked? We got, we got ransomware attack on ours, because we didn't have a firewall at the time, and it was an expense that, um, didn't want to be done, and then we got firewall, or we got the attack.
Yeah, so another thing that I asked in the, in the email here was, um, maybe we can talk about it, is, uh, the website, the website should be backed up every couple of weeks or something like that.
I think it is.
Because if it's not, then we lose everything we have to start off, so.
Upper Hudson, they definitely do that, they have their, because we're on their server, it's definitely backed up all the time. Like even when we got the ransomware attack, um, we didn't lose anything on our website or, you know, we actually were able to. Rodden was able to recover the majority of the stuff that they stole or that they encrypted, so we didn't have to pay anything, it was good, but it was still not fun. No, no. Yeah, we got a fire, we had a new, got a new firewall. Yeah. Yeah.
Is Noah going to be working on the bedrooms too?
We, yeah, I would say that we can all work on that together, figuring it out, because that's going to be a, it's, it's all the same thing, so I don't see why we would have two people, you know? So.
And the other thing I was going to mention, it's sort of, we still have the COVID phase update on here, but, um, did you want to just mention about the COVID funds?
Oh, right, right. I just deposited them today. The, from the newer, or from the CARES Act, we were able to get reimbursed for PPE expenses. So Upper Hudson was able to help us check for a thousand dollars and, well, $1,088, almost $1,100. So that's been deposited and that will definitely cover all of the PPE that we did purchase, all of the hand sanitizer stations, the Plexi Blast, everything basically that we bought for all of the COVID stuff, that definitely covers it. So that was a great, that was a nice little surprise, I didn't know we were going to get that.
Right. Did Upper Hudson coordinate that as well?
Yeah, yep. Nope, they just did it. So, yeah. So, um, yeah, that was it.
So right now for COVID preparations, are we just in a wait-and-see mode, is there anything else you want to talk about with that?
I kind of think that that's where we're at, is a wait-and-see mode. If we, again, if we're in the area where we have, there's no one in this area that's doing masking, like mandated masking or anything like that, it kind of. It becomes a little tricky if the library is the only place in the entire community that's saying, well, you have to come in. I don't think we would get a lot of back for it, I think a lot of people would be fine. But as of right now, I'm kind of like a wait-and-see and then if things get worse. The other thing we can do too, though, is just say we're going to follow whatever the school's doing. Because we're a library, and that's what a lot of libraries will do, is follow whatever school is regulating, so if the school's saying masks inside, and they are. Yeah. I think my concern is that the, there are people who come in who bring their children in and they are not masked, and it's like, well, I know that you're not vaccinated, but we're not, you don't have a policy that they said they have to. So, um, we also don't have a lot of kids coming in right now either, a lot of parents are keeping their kids.
I mean, as a parent, we don't know very many places that are inside, we don't know this anymore, that, when we do, like today, we took the dogs to the back and I was halfway down and I was like, oh, like a mask.
Right. Yeah. I mean, I'm good to keep it where it is right now unless there's, you know, anybody else is deciding.
I think it would be good to follow school policies so it's consistent for the kids and it's safer.
Right. So, well, I mean, technically, it would be then that just the children under 12 are the ones who have to be masked. Right. So then do we back, go back to a mask policy inside?
I think if we want to follow school guidelines and be able to say that's what we're doing and why we're doing it. With things being as dicey as the, it's just looking like it's getting really bad in a number of places. I mean, the vaccination is higher here, so it looks like it's going to go sideways that fast.
The most likely will turn to, like, everybody not. Most likely will turn to like everybody not to go.
Yeah.
Okay. So is that?
I mean, I think if, if you want to go with the school, school starts in two and a half weeks. They're meeting in committees now, very shortly. Look, that was something official.
So wait for the official. How is the staff feeling about it right now? Are they?
They're fine because they, you know, everybody's okay because they've been vaccinated. So they have no worries with that. So. And, you know, I think that the being, having the Plexiglas right there is also a help too. So. I don't know. If you, you're like, what is it?
My opinion is we should go to the school. I haven't said that for months.
So I'll wait until the school's official come out and then we'll. Oh.
You have good timing.
Hello.
Can you hear us? Okay.
Yes, I can hear you guys fine.
Okay. Great. So I think we're just got moving on to the treasurer's report. So.
Wow, that was perfect timing.
Yeah. How are you feeling?
Oh, sorry. I don't have anything to add really to what the report says, but we're looking good in numbers. We're. Pretty much exactly the same amount of time through the year as we are through our budgeted amount of spending. So that seems on track. One small change that I made in the report this month is I, when I was figuring out our possible cushion for the end of the year, I had only been using our savings account. But our checking account often has five or seven thousand dollars in it, depending on when I transferred money last. So I went back through, starting this month through the last few months and added in the checking account amounts to the projected cushion, which of course made it bigger than it had been when I was just using the savings account. But that's actually a more accurate look because five or seven thousand dollars sitting in the checking account is a lot of money for us. But anyway, we're on track with spending. Also with our earning, we've earned almost everything. I think we're thirty, around thirty-five hundred dollars short of what we were hoping to earn for the year. Which we probably could make up with a fundraiser or two. And we haven't even started annual appeal season, which we're definitely guaranteed to get more than that in. So looking to the end of the year, I'm expecting us to be over what we planned on bringing in for the year.
That's good news. Very good. Anybody have any questions for Melanie or questions about the other financial reports? So probably what has not been spent that would be coming is the. So the electrical probably would have been included already, but the steps would not.
Steps would not.
And that was what, twenty-five hundred?
Something like that, yeah. Which I was going to take out of the special projects or put that in that special projects. Spot, just because that's what I would think it would be, unless you guys want me to put it into the repairs and maintenance, which we can do that too. So.
Any opinions on that?
Yeah.
Special projects. Okay, so.
Is that the stairs off the back of the deck?
Yeah. So we'll take that out of the special projects account.
Okay, that makes sense.
And what is twenty-two thousand?
Yes, somewhere around there, yeah. Twenty-five hundred.
And at the moment. We don't have anything else that we have received an estimate on or anything that we have immediate plans to move forward on. We did learn about the electrical box issue.
Yeah, unfortunately that, so the electrical box is behind that wooden case right there. And unfortunately. It is blocking the cover. So if they need to take the cover off of it, they have to take the entire thing out apart. So Mike already, I mean, he had to take. The panel, the wooden panel had to come off in order to see the, to be able to take the, the cover of the electric box off, which he needed to do. So he's like, that's actually a code violation. So we have to have that redone. Uh, no, actually it's not because all of the wiring is in that. So it's not just decorative. It's there to. Yeah, I don't know how, Johnny might be able to remember more than, or know more than I do about why we did it that way, but. All of the wiring and everything is in that box or in that, that paneling. It's not behind a wall or anything. So we just need to expand it. So.
Any sense of how much it will cost to make it up to code?
No, I haven't even gone there yet. So.
Probably be done by just making this space around that door. Part of it up like top and down. Because what the problem is, is there's a plate inside and it's bigger than the hole. And so you just have to make the hole bigger. Yeah. And I mean, you get the fuses or the circuit breakers easily.
Right. You can't take the panel off so they come up behind it.
Yeah.
But just by making a door up there. It takes creativity, but it wouldn't be particularly expensive.
We don't know that we have a timeframe on that. I mean.
I haven't really, so.
Well, we should take care of it. We don't have to worry about it until we get the violation. Maybe you have some time to fix it. If it's a code violation, you know, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it.
So I'll get some estimates for it.
Okay, thank you.
I would guess, yeah.
You're a carpenter or somebody makes cabinets?
What about the guy who made the cabinet?
He's, he's, he's done. You see, he's retired. He actually only did that. Oh, sorry. No, 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 that way. He does not, he's retired and he only came out of retirement as a favor to Tom to build that four. I would ask Tony, but he's also retired. So. You know, he got rid of the shop. So he's done, done. So I'll, I'll ask around and see if we can find someone to repair it or replace it or whatever we can do. So yeah, that would be another expense. He might be, but I don't know if he's going to.
Any other questions on treasurer's report or finances?
I don't know if the layout.
Yeah. You did a great job on that. Okay. So moving to committee report, we'll start with Fran and marketing highlight. Okay, I guess the biggest news is that we got all of those individual organization reports out for all of the organizations. I wouldn't say that we received. Great fanfare thus far, but. Bonnie and Fran mentioned the findings for SFP in her monthly newsletter. So there's some, some positive response thus far. But in terms of things that needed attention, Jen and I are planning to try to schedule a meeting with a number of people who we think would be influential in helping. The organizations to be more interested in a conversation around the findings and how we could all work together. Which was really the purpose of the research in the first place, to start a conversation around how. We can work toward improving the town and getting the individual organizations to work more collaboratively. So. That's our first step. We've got to do it pretty quickly because we plan to have the actual multi-organization meeting in mid-September. So we gotta get a move on with that. So right after, I guess, right after that SFP.
Sarah, are we giving out the results to the community? Like, should I, could I put some of that into my newsletters, some of the things that were said or?
We're planning to have a meeting where we're going to.
Okay.
Invite residents. So the first, the first meeting is with the organization.
Okay.
And the idea around that is to try to come up with a few things, the report surfaced a few things that we thought were probably the quickest, easiest things that we could all address together, which were the newsletter and the directory. But if we have something that we can say, okay, residents, here, here's what we learned from you. So we give them feedback on what the community had to say.
Right.
But also here's what we're doing. So it's not just, here's what we heard and thanks, you know?
Yeah, exactly. Sure. So I'll wait and to put anything into our newsletter or on the website or on Facebook or anything like that until after that.
I think we can, but I think anything that has to, sort of, have a plan should probably wait, but things that have to do with how the library performed, the integrations that people had to say about us.
Okay.
I don't know, but that has to wait. What, what's your next? I, I think it'll be okay. I think honestly, the first step, my way to consider it. So we, we have now the names of people, contact information for people who are interested. So I think planning. And appropriate communication to them would probably be, you know, first and foremost, the great thing to do is to make, to the trouble to say we're interested. Got people that we've had maybe forward the newsletter to and say, you're interested in learning more. Here's that, sign up for, you know, you're interested in volunteering. Let us tell you about what volunteer opportunities we have. You know, we have some people interested in research. So if we do want to do a follow-up focus group, bond program or something. And we happen to know, but the organizations don't know that the people that are interested in research tend to be interested in research for all of the organizations. So it could be more of a widespread thing or, or discuss it.
Okay. I can reach out to some of the people and just, you know, who were in the survey or who answered the survey and gave us their information. And I'll just send out a, like an email to everybody. But if you guys are okay with me putting stuff out there, we can, unless you wanted to wait so that it would maybe get more people to actually come to the building to have meeting, to hear what some of the results were.
Well, that we're definitely going to do.
Right. So I'm saying like, if you want to wait until after that meeting, that way, you know, maybe you'll get more people to come to the meeting if they are not going to hear the results of it until it's that meeting and then after.
Might be good to leverage it to say, when we're ready to start inviting the public, we could start teasing some of the things.
Okay.
Because then people might want to be interested in hearing more about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that people would be. How great the library did on the survey, but, but I mean, it wouldn't be something that I'm waiting to.
If we didn't.
I'm not going to go in now because now I know that.
Right. I try to do whatever we can to get people in the building. So. Okay. Okay.
The other thing, we were planning to have a meeting this Monday on people go to try to finalize logo and tag on representation, but it got postponed. So we're going to do that this coming Monday and we'll be back to everybody to get approval on, on the direction that we want to take hopefully. We know we do have a few things that we need to have that, like thing we feel and maybe have to order. And I know you mentioned it for the website, you know. So we know that there's some real play. Try to keep this moving. And then one, one other final thing is that the two sort of low-hanging fruit proposed research actions, that's the newsletter. And the directory also serves as a big component for welcome program because that's something that will let people know what's going on and help them meet new people and, and know where the business is relocated and all that sort of stuff. That we could build into our welcome.
Did the historical society roll out something as well? Do you know? I know that they were going to, but I don't know if they ever did.
I think they've started to. I don't, they, they published a, I think Facebook post with a picture of bags that they were doing. I don't know what they have done beyond that. And I guess the other thing is I just, I didn't really hear back on the report that had the more specific information about the library. So I don't know if anybody had thoughts about that or feedback or.
Just that it sounded good. There were a lot of good things in there. So that was kind of. No, not yet, actually. That's what I have to do.
Ring and bells. It was nice to see that it sort of, I thought both the feedback matched up with one, what I think we are trying to do and how we're trying to be perceived in the community and also how we think we are. It seemed very, I, I felt like, especially because we've had all these discussions lately around logo or on the, that I, we're, I think we have a fairly accurate understanding of how we're perceived. And I think that even the negative perception stuff in there, which was mostly seemed to be around taxes, taxes and the bank for the buck for. You know, it's not that it's about the, you know. And you know, on the other thing was like a little bit of a perceived focus on kids. Like you, people said a lot of kids go to the library or, you know, something like that. So. Which is you're aware of, that they're trying to. Yeah. Yeah. It was nice to sort of see that, yeah, I think a lot of clearly.
Self-aware, you know what I mean? It was a nice boost for me. So.
So next up, strategic planning. And Danny, do you want to highlight? I know we're kind of big, we got a big item.
Well, we had our meeting and essentially we agreed on two topics that everybody's favorite. Scott made the point that really even when we brought in Paul Mayes to offer some of his ideas, we aren't really committed to. We're paying for the services so far. And then maybe we'd be better off getting specialized advisors or contractors or somebody to give us some ideas. Reduce our cost. The one advantage of them is that they can supply the grants. Experience that people set up to do it. And so to a large extent, they could self-finance or write ideas.
I, I thought, I had, I guess I came away from the meeting with a slightly different impression in that I thought we're continuing to look into Paul Mayes. Scott was going to write up the. Go through the proposal with some specific areas where maybe we could scale back. And Kim was going to send the ideas of where the focus should be, but that at the end of the day, having one person who's able to coordinate this would be valuable as well. Because even if we scale back on what we're doing, to try to start trying to find this person or that person, like, you know, it's something that we made on now.
Something is a lot of money. Things are paying to the architecture expertise. I think you get the same thing through the, but better than through the BOTS by using more different kinds of specials. We might do that. I think Paul can really help the library. But a thirty thousand dollar price tag on a master plan is a lot of money. So both, I think we need to think about, what I was trying to say is I think we need to think about staging that so that let's take a look at four less expensive projects that are within our budgetary ability to meet. Either whether to grant or otherwise is doing these kinds of things. And trying to work to figure out what Paul can take out of the proposals that is essential to forming the basis for developing a master plan. It's almost like what he was talking about in terms of doing sort of building improvements and stages. It's sort of like doing your master plan in stages and figuring out, what are your immediate objectives? What's essential and paring down the proposal so that he's happy to look at this project as a long-term project, which can develop as we develop and perhaps raise additional funds to support the kinds of things that he's talking about and that we're thinking of. So like, it's not spending your money on getting him to assess the capabilities of our small systems. I bet that's really where I was.
From the other perspective, the whole point of a master plan is to give you a guideline for all aspects.
Yeah.
It goes both ways, unfortunately.
Sure. But I mean, I don't think we have the money.
Well, he said he was gonna go through it and try and downsize.
Yeah. I tried to take a look at it, see what I could fly on. I don't have the expertise to ask the people if it's important or not.
Right.
Everything was interrelated.
He definitely, that was the part when we talked, spoke about it, that was definitely what he said he would do, is go through, what kinds of things can we make more concrete towards us and not so, you know?
Yes.
So I, right, so I did email him, I gave him, you know, what we had talked about, and I'm waiting to hear back, but he said he probably won't get back to us in September anyway, because it's writing season, so everything's super, super busy in his office. So he said he'll go through it and, you know, we don't have to accept it, it's, you know, we can see where he goes from there and then see where, where it takes us.
So expecting a revised proposal for mid-September.
Yep.
Services, we talked about half grants, we've been talking about the construction grants, we're really talking on a we get a grant in next year, you're getting funded two years, so it's like two years down the road.
Yeah.
The money that's granted this year, I think, begins to get awarded. The awards are in May, and the funding is six months thereafter, so. It moves real slow.
Yeah, but that's all your reason. Yeah, that's all the more reason to have a plan, because if there are these larger things, we, like you say, there's a, there's a gap between when we're coming up with the bright idea and then making, yeah, so, you know, that's, that's something that I think we need to we need to, yes, there are the short-term things that we're thinking of that we might be able to do, but, you know.
Be able to anticipate.
Yeah.
Which again, comes back to making the master plan reasonably comprehensive.
Right.
And the limit of that is, it was the point you made at the meeting, I think, the big issue was, as you presented, was full of generalities that couldn't apply to any of, you know, 10 other libraries that could land, and that's, that was where it was weak. Focus on us more. I think should be a goal for round two. We still, you know, if we're gonna have a master plan, or any master idea, or what he's for, we still have to cover all the aspects that he considers, he considers. And within the guidelines, the two highest priorities, I think, it wasn't any other priority that we agreed on, right?
Making this, yeah, making the open spaces open, but also flexible, in other words, making that space more flexible so that we can use it for different purposes than needed.
That was the first thing that I put in the list, so. Okay.
Any more objection to a five-minute break? And/or I'll excuse myself for a minute.
Sure.
We did two little. Bacon, the item sale here for Gray, we added about another 160 from our efforts at the all your prior department cars to show, so we added about 350.
I can tell you right now, bake sale, yeah, exactly 350.
So sort of what we expected. This week, we're doing another bake sale for the musicians, and we've got a couple people. Which is probably, probably running things back to that, or whatever, I mean, it'll be fun.
Are you gonna do the snow cones?
Yeah. And we'll have some cookies. And brownies and Rice Krispies.
Okay, we can advertise that. I'm gonna send out a reminder of what the programs are for tomorrow, so I'll put that in the reminder. We can also, see, the thing is, is that most of the time, usually, we have Stewart's Donates Ice Cream, and we have a big ice cream Sunday party. I don't want to do that just because it just can get to be a mess, and with COVID, I have a strong feeling dealing with all that, especially because we usually let the kids do their own stuff. But we can let people know, we did get free gift certificates, so every kid will get a gift card for a free ice cream at Stewart's instead. So we're balancing it out, so this will be perfect. The weather is not gonna be bad. It can't. It can't be bad. Wait, I don't think we should even mention rain. Just can't, because I can't do anymore when it comes to that. Because we're gonna have a very wet and soggy spot in the tent to do magic shows.
Have we seen any donations come in over Facebook?
No.
I haven't, did you even see the test one come through?
No.
I know it takes a little bit, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, because I did the test one, I don't want to start pushing it until we, you know, make sure that it all worked as planned, so.
No, we haven't. The other thing too is that the Live at the Library, we've been putting the donation jar out, and we have collected so far $202, so 101 goes to the Historical Society, and 101 comes to us. So that's only three programs that have kicked in a little bit, you know, so I think that's pretty good. And we are, we, the people we had to cancel because of rain and the electrical issues, we've rescheduled them for September. So we're just gonna keep on going into September, take Memorial Day weekend off, but then keep going. So I might even just try to keep finding more people who would want to do it. But we'll see.
Would you mind just repeating what we actually brought in?
At the Live at the Library?
Yeah.
$202, half of which is ours, yep.
You have some fun, right in there for a moment?
Nope.
Okay, nominating?
I don't have much time left. I think the volunteer, that is a volunteer, was working. I think you're the only one who uses this.
Yeah, I mean, we've got 18 or so folks who will come in and help out. Basically, it's fine. It's, I mean, in a certain sense, what it's done, which is a really good thing, is that to the extent that we were relying on this group to bake, because there was no other show in town, it sort of provides another source where we can add another group of people we don't feel so put upon to actually volunteer. So in that regard, I shoot out an email or response, I shoot out another email saying, didn't hear from anyone, is there anyone out there? Two or three people respond, so I think it's fine. I'm happy with it, it seems to work okay. And particularly for these little events, it's, it's, I think, really good. The downside is that you're making $200 or $300 a pop, and it's still a lot of work. And you're sort of back to the, if you spend two hours cooking and sort of the library nets all of 25 bucks, it's just like, I mean, it's good for community building, and it's nice to have cupcakes and all of that, but it's not an effective.
For some volunteers to do, just so they don't look at it like.
To the banking list.
Yes.
I want it to be us.
Well, we could cut off that for a second, so the garden came up.
Yeah, I haven't heard very much from them in a while, so I was thinking that we might want to see about starting fresh with, like, a landscaping something and just, let's start fresh, and then we can maintain it and have volunteers help maintain it. Because at this point, we don't want to, um, we need something out there better than what it is right now, and if we are just relying on volunteers who can only give time every now and then, and it's not, so if we can just, I was like, I was thinking, maybe we should just call some landscaping places, get some bids, get some ideas and go from there.
Going back to the issue of Paul and services, let's keep architecture something which they do. To the, to the extent, or I'm sure they've got those who are trained in that area. So to the extent that there's a large backyard out there, that can, that's something that you need professional help with in terms of figuring out what your programs are and how you can use your outdoors to expand your ability to mount programs and create other interesting, attractive features.
Sure.
And by hiring, let, Zemis makes lovely stuff, lovely plant stock, but you don't necessarily go to them to design an outdoor environment.
Sure.
For a library.
I, that was absolutely.
Yeah, well, if there's any landscapers to come.
Well, I was just thinking, right now, I'm thinking of the garden.
Yes, yes.
So I liked hearing that somebody posted, because Mike was there, that somebody on the side of the library. Oh, are you doing a natural?
Actually, that would probably do something for Storytale. Wasn't it crafted?
You know, a really nice one in software.
It was an old lady who's not afraid of anything. Trick-or-treating at each age.
We should do the, for Halloween, do the pumpkins again, and ask people to bring them back, and then have them in the story walk and look and go and look at the pumpkin idea going through again. All right, we're going on that one. So is it okay if I call some landscapers to just give us some ideas about how much it costs? Okay.
So it doesn't seem like landscaping cleanup was in the volunteer activity necessarily.
Even inside housekeeping wise.
That's what I was just gonna say. Yeah, I mean, there's things like even just, you know, cleaning out the shelves because they're so dusty and, you know, that kind of thing. If people want to help do that kind of thing, that'd be great. Have Chelsea working on a project that will take her for a very long time, so that is good. But there's lots of other things that I'm sure we can, you know, even just cleaning, and, you know, Debbie cleans really well, but, like, you know, like, all of the shelves need to be nicer.
We can meet and come up with a list of different, I remember somebody used to probably pull up a box or, you know, a list of things of potential, not just one-shot volunteering, but.
People coming in more and more regularly.
Out there and see if anybody's interested in any of that.
That sounds great.
I think the one thing that we need to use on eventually is for the directory that you want to make. Getting all that information for all local businesses is a huge undertaking, so that might be able instead of looking at spreadsheet or something, they just plug in information.
Yeah, and I was sort of hoping that the directory wouldn't just be name of business, what they offer, but a little bit of their promotion, so.
Yeah, so that, that's what I'm referring to, like, it's a huge undertaking, taking like every single business, grabbing all that information.
Okay, youth committee. Harder somewhere than it has ever been to do. Figure-out camp, but, you know, everybody was very creative and very flexible, and we got it done, we used certain parts of the tent that weren't flooded, we even built a little bridge across the running river.
It was all steam, it was totally an activity that was.
They all seemed to have a great, I think, you know, older tents who, you know, usually my fourth or sixth day.
You're so starved for social interaction.
So it all worked out. Thanks to the town for letting us use the town hall a few times, and we do a lot of electricity here. We also use the pavilion, the fire hall for the magic show, because my tents were flooded, so. So kind of the whole town kind of came together. I will have a more detailed report next month of expenditures and everything else. Other than that, we have not done a team event yet, because the tent has done very well. Maybe something in the fall, we'll see how that goes. Kim and I started talking about Halloween. I'm gonna reach out to somebody at the fire hall to find out what I'm not imagining our big Halloween party happening inside the fire hall. I know Kim said they have certain policies, like you have to be vaccinated or tested. With the crowd when we get there, that's just. But I do want to start a communication so that hopefully it's not going to be canceled altogether, and maybe we can work out at least trunk-or-treating outside. I know, I just went to Hancock School, and they did a new thing that was all outside where it was kind of like our Halloween party where it involved being people that either sign up to do a trunk and give out candy, or the community signed up for games out of their trunk.
Yeah, that was a lot of fun.
It'll take a little more work, but I think if we can do it outside. Other than that, I do want to put the plugin that I have, after April, I have one more year on the board, and it would be great if anybody wants to step in Youth Committee after I leave to start kind of seeing what I do now, because a lot of the stuff we do for Youth Committee happens once a year. So like, the planning for camp happens once a year, and the Halloween party, so I would welcome that.
And just so you know, I heard from Taylor about whether or not she was interested, and she said she's going to pass now on being a board member because she's starting graduate school, and she's starting a brand-new job as a teacher. So she said it's just a little too much to add onto her plate, so. I did say, though, if you're interested later, let us know, so. Yeah, every teacher I've ever told that, oh, she might be doing that, they're like, is she crazy? Logan was like, you shouldn't even be asking her.
Any other people you might have in mind that would be? So next we have building grounds, which we, I know there's no reports on this point, so I wanted to save that discussion of that with committee thing. Same with administrative committee. So let's just go through, so old business master plan proposal, we kind of talked about that and just under strategic planning. So on committees, so I know I wasn't here last meeting and I apologize for that and I think a lot of the, some of the discussion around committees got tabled. So I just want to see if we can go through, make sure we know who's on the committees. If there's anything else we need to be tracking for them, if there's any that are not working as. As organized at the moment. So you just talked about, so Rebecca, Rana, time table for getting your replacement for you, right now we have you as the chair. Me, Kim and Melanie on, on the committee. Correct, okay, right. And I think we have a pretty good feel for everything that that committee does. And right now we've got the tracking and the reporting, the extra expenses due to COVID. That's one of the items that's on for that. And obviously how it's becoming. Building and grounds, I was proposing that we combine those two committees. And I think Melanie had been the chair of one of them. Is Melanie still with us? Yes.
I had put my name on the grounds committee at one point just because we didn't have anybody else and obviously I have not been paying attention to that, so feel free to nominate someone else.
Or do you want to stay as it?
So building and grounds, obviously that's going to be kind of very tied to the master plan as well. So I'm wondering if we want, how do we, how, so right now the, the major project subcommittee. Has me as the chair, Ed, Kim, Sarah and Scott on the committee. Rebecca, I think you were on the grounds committee. Is there someone who would like to chair the building and grounds committee that would have that, the foot committee underneath of it? That's dealing with this whole master plan and how it's all going to tie together.
I have a question for that. Should we separate that though? I mean, because I think there's a difference. When you say building and grounds with the master plan, that's a big undertaking. But there's also building and grounds, just little things that need to be taken, you know, day-to-day things, month-to-month things. That need to be taken care of.
But I think, yes, I think there should be two separate things, just with the, but they're. Connected so that as we are. Plotting out things we know.
Right.
Yeah.
So when you're designing, then projects and planning committee becomes a subcommittee of building and grounds?
The major projects one, that I was thinking, not strategic planning, because that's got a different. Different set of tasks with it. Strategic planning, we got to look at our fifteen-year goals, the three-to-five-year strategies, create the annual strategic plan. Manage the plan against that, so that's to me not, not just about the building, that's not just about the master plan. For the, for the building.
It seems like there's sort of a decline. I mean, buildings and grounds, just like you said, is maintenance. Whereas I think a big part of strategic planning would be the master plan. Part of it.
Right, but you have, there's a lot under that, I mean, strategic plan kind of touches on everything, it's sort of how we, everyone else that operates, right? Everything comes from that. No, but on the plan, we have an annual plan that comes out of that that we worked.
Right, but that should have under it, the master plan, I think. Master plan would be a guide as much as the long-term goals, is what we're doing. It's a part of the plan. Seems like they shouldn't be separate. I mean, exactly, I agree, it's a lot of things, but it's also.
I mean, I, I think the concern is if the same people are, who are going to be having to handle something, like can we just combine it so that it's the same people that are going to be on that committee? To look at the short-term stuff and the long-term stuff that we just kind of have it together, that was my thought.
But I'm just saying that master plan aspect is a part of it.
Yeah. So Scott, you had expressed interest, I think, in the last meeting, I was right, interested in. What were you interested in? I won't assume. Right, but that's. So do, would you be the chair of the buildings and grounds? And then do we want to, so Rebecca, you want to stay on that? I'm happy to be a part of that. Now. Do it, what, what's the, I don't have, I don't have a strong preference, so if we want to separate out. Who's, how we're handling the, the master plans or that major project committee. That's the one that would be responsible for the grants, all that kind of stuff down the road, like moving that whole project.
And so would there be a projects committee? As well as the major grants and projects? I'm tempted to have seen what, how they're separating.
So my thought would be the major projects would include the master plan, project planning, construction. So everything's sort of related to that, so that had things like the land acquisition, the boundary line stuff. Prioritizing the upgrades, you know. That, all that kind of work would be under that major project committee. So if it takes off, if we go in that direction, it's going to be a lot of work.
Oh, yeah, no, I'd agree.
I mean, one of the things, it's sort of a hard question, you've got like ten or twelve people floating around and do this though. We can create fifteen subcommittees, but ultimately we're talking to ourselves. Organizing is one, each committee with essentially being primarily responsible for specific tasks. Or there were you create a very sophisticated committee structure, really doesn't make much difference at the end of the day. You've got certain tasks that need to accomplish them, whether it's within the rubric of buildings and grounds and strategic planning under it. I wouldn't spend a whole lot of time on this, it's just you need to decide who's responsible for what, what, what. Ultimately, I mean, to Jen's point, I think it's correct and I was sort of coming in, but I think she's dead on. The person who's like tasked with the chairman ends up driving the agenda and pushing folks to do stuff. So you're undertaking the responsibility, the official. Yeah, well, I mean, I'm just saying that, I mean, but ultimately you're, it's your dog and pony show when they say look forward.
So like for Ed, the strategic planning committee, with you as chair, we have the responsibilities as the fifteen-year-old, fifteen-year. Goals annually, the three-to-five-year strategy annually, creating the annual strategic plan, which I think is going to be coming up for the following year. And then managing the action plan for the progress, so that all. It's not necessarily every, every task that, that you're not responsible for, everything that has come out under that. Plan, you know, obviously there was things that came out of that, like the veterans and that, it's gone to the various other committees to work on. But the strategic planning committee is the one who's tasked with writing that, writing that up, reviewing it, you know, presenting it.
One, I would schedule it.
One would hope, we have a strategic plan, now the issue on moving forward is. Executing and changing as appropriate as we want, so hopefully we've done most of the work. And to the extent of, you know, updating, refreshing and if we need to change direction, we'll change direction.
It's all pretty simple.
Can I just ask where we are in acquiring the land from the neighbor? Did that ever happen?
It got tabled. Because she'd refinancing her house. Yeah, it was, she was not a willing participant, I spoke to Brian, he was going to pull the file, he never got back to me. I think we were concerned that if we wanted to expand at the back end, we'd need to regularize that, putting aside that there were other reasons to maybe grab up to operate. She seemed to be willing to do a swap, in the middle of a refinance, made no sense for her, all it would do is create. She needs to refine, I mean, if yes, they, no one did, it's obvious. But if I were refinancing, refinancing, I'd do the refinance and then do an adjustment to the landline new, new bag, doing it in between. It's really, you don't even know who gets talked to, so I mean, it, it wasn't impossible to do, I mean, Brian said and I think he was right, just. It's difficult to bring about because she's sort of in the middle of the process, so if we ultimately decide that. Regardless of whether you expand out back in the future and you need to adjust that property line in order to accommodate that. If that's not an issue, still they want to part of the line, as you pointed out, because it's just a peninsula between us and our shed and. And she seemed to be willing to monkey around a lot while I was under doing a refinancing and then.
Progressed or?
I have no idea. Even speaking to her is always a mystery. She doesn't answer, she screens a phone call, she's, she's talked to her.
I tried, really friendly, I mean, I'm not saying disagree with your impression, but, you know, she seemed very happy.
I didn't, I didn't.
Find us the land, do all that stuff, but no, it's such a complicated life.
She wasn't unfriendly, it's just that she wasn't really, too involved. She liked the idea of swapping.
It seems like it is probably something we should just be capable of until there's a little bit more.
I think that's right.
Hopefully her situation will settle down as well.
What's really, what was interesting about the dynamic is, I believe she had a relationship with Brian. And I think Brian had done some representation, but she didn't seem to remember what it was that looked about, it was just an, an interesting discussion. And she just made her call.
Okay, so fundraising committee, Scott, you wanted to step, all the chair positions, is there anyone else who wants to step into the chair position? Melanie left.
Did she? Wow, isn't it? That's what I was just gonna say. She's not here, she left.
I can talk to her about that one, if she is interested, I also would not mind doing that one, just because I think there's. But I think, I know it had sort of been left as all members of the board have to participate, and of course they do for fundraising, but I still think we, we. If we can have a small core group that's doing the preparation and ideas and, and that, it would help keep that, help, because that's an important one and. Scott, I think you've sort of been on your, on your own a little bit on that, so.
I mean, one of the things that we need to do is actually focus more. That's something that we really, I mean, it requires a huge amount of time. And that's, and there's money out there and it's available. And particularly in that we have a, a larger vision for this organization than we have in the past. It's not going to come about unless we locate some resources, be it for construction or program or whatever. And we have a nice little organization and we'll put together a program, I think we can interest people in funding all our efforts.
Administrative committee, that has an open chair position, we have members of me, Rebecca and Sarah. This committee does not have to necessarily do a whole lot, I mean, there's the potential to do a whole lot if we were to undertake all of the policy updates. However, there's just like a couple of key things that maybe we need to do, which is related to the director of youth stuff. That's going to come around before we know it. So it would be good to have that chair filled and the committee meet a couple of times and bang out the most important stuff. Get the storm and after that for a while, I personally wouldn't be super excited, but. So do we have?
Turnover happens.
You're not going anywhere, right? Unless you guys are doing something, I don't know, but yeah.
Next week, as soon as these two tasks, we'd be safe.
Well, we were talking about moving to Canada, but, you know, that's my partner right now.
How about if the three of us agree that we'll just.
Is there a time that those meetings, it's like.
No.
Committee like July and August, I can't move anything out. But like after October, I have three times at least, so.
Well, let's, let's, let's say the three of us, let's agree that we're going to just have an October meeting. Finish the stuff and then we can figure that out later. I'll set it up, I'll, I'll do that. All right, and then the last one is the brand marketing committee, which I think is running well and is set, the only thing is, I think. Noah, we wanted to ask if you wanted to join that since the both sides are in that. Okay, awesome.
Yeah, I don't think we can wait.
No, but, well, just, just because of the timing of, yeah.
But we'll loop you in as soon as Sarah ready to be.
Okay, and then. Last committee is recruitment, which Rebecca. And so we have a couple of things with having this survey that has given us new names of potential people. And I just thought we might as well review this right now and make sure we're all on the same page, I sent you that. The terms, make sure we're in agreement on, so it looks like, and. So we have, we replaced Tom, so we have filled that vacancy, which is the one, one vacancy. In 2022, Ed, your second term is in. Scott, your first term is in. And I think technically my first term, or my fill-in term, my term I took over is ending. We also, I, I, I really just have to pull the plug on this, but Renee. I'll finally accept her resignation. So we will have an open position there. And then just as a heads up, so you all may know Robin is running for town board. So I asked Tim Burke about potential conflict of interest. And he said, he advised me that, yes, they're probably, if she were to be elected. That he would strongly suggest that she not be on our board at that point. So I have not actually had a chance to talk to her yet about that, so. I'll, I'll send her a message, but so depending on the election, that might be another. So that would give us two, you know, short-term openings that are happening. And then Ed's position in 2022. I don't know, Scott, if you're planning second term. Not putting you on the spot, sorry. That would be as a potential reason for whatever. And then we have Keith who. No, I haven't heard from him either when I've spoken about, but he was interested and he had some clearances he had to have happen with his job, but.
Yeah, I'm good. I don't know.
And Taylor is now out, which is disappointing, but promising. So I think that's where things stand.
Can I just add something with the committees? With our volunteer group. One thing that I, it doesn't work with all committees, but one thing I've done with the youth committee is pulled in some people, some non-board members to help out. I usually have a group that helps with the Halloween party, helps with the Easter party. I don't do it with camp because it involves salaries and personnel. And I don't think the whole town needs to know how much Jessica makes or which teenagers were hired and why some weren't hired or all of that mess. So as far as adding more members to the committees, I think there's some committees like Navy Buildings and Grounds or, you know, that can draw in some non, as long as it's chaired by a board member, draw in some non-board members who want to help out a little, but not be part of the whole board.
Which might be where you get the volunteer list and start asking people.
Right. If we figure out which committees would be accepting.
Yeah.
You know, like administrators probably not.
Right. Fundraising maybe.
Fundraising, definitely.
Fundraising, building and grounds. Yeah. People agree with that?
Yeah. So if those committees in whatever time want to give me a description of what kinds of things they're looking for from a volunteer, I can send out a nice thing if you get any such as, you know, what, what a volunteer might do, how often you meet.
Sounds good. Okay. Thank you for that progress. Okay. So call for public comment. And John, are you, are you thinking you're going to be interested in joining the board? Or do you think you're interested in more perhaps joining committee or we're very? Yeah, no problem. Yeah. Yeah. So I, just so we all, so you're a past president of the library, is that correct?
Yes. I was on the board, I can remember it was four, five and six years. I was the president for Nancy Peterson. Then I was president when the edition was actually put on. My job was mainly to let Tony do what he wanted to do. You did a good job. And therefore I did a good job.
I agree.
One of the very early board presidents who also happened to be guilty. We'd take the library director to, and her assistant to lunch in Pittsfield. And we would stop at a bookstore in case she would buy the new books for the library.
Wow. Wow. Whole different way of doing things now. Definitely.
It would definitely be good to get from your, you know, people running about sort of what, how it worked with doing the edition. Successful and what wasn't, you know, things to think about as we move forward.
Interested to be on the board. I'm really a little doubtful about. My experience, what value my experience has where you are now.
Still always good to, I mean, it feels like there's always a lot of lessons to be learned from what people experienced before. And, you know, especially with big projects like that. So, yeah. So we'll keep you on the list for now for the next meeting and you can think about stuff. No, okay. That sounds, that sounds great. Yeah.
One thing I did just think about is that he did hire an architectural firm to help us do some brainstorming. And we specifically looked to them and said, we need some help planning. Part of our problem is that we need to keep the budget low. We want you to ask us a break. Our desire so that we don't go overboard. The next thing we'll do will be like $300,000.
Does anyone have any new business? I didn't have anything on my mind, but I didn't think I was missing anything. All right. So we have a motion to adjourn. All right, and a second. No, in a second, we're just going to stay. Thank you everyone. Appreciate your time.